This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thank you all for coming tonight. As always, we will start out with our prayer and pledge. Dr. Nation?
Our Lord and Heavenly Father, this could be a very long prayer tonight, but you know our hearts, so I'll stick to what I have prepared. We come before you this evening grateful that we're able to do so, that you've given the knowledge to those who are responsible for arranging a safe environment in which we can gather. Lord, we're going through a time in our world unlike any other. This is a time for all of us to realize that it's a time to listen to those who know and for those who know to have the wisdom of what to share. Help us all to realize that we cannot know all that is being done to get us through the COVID-19 pandemic, but to listen to and follow the guidelines of those who have massive amounts of input and are giving the best guidance possible. Lord, this is not a time for politics and blame, but a time for all of us to do our part. We know that no person can know everything and that we're all in a situation like no other. Yet we also know that you, Lord, are in control. Nothing is new or a surprise to you. Give those who have control to look to you and follow your guidance. You already know the outcome. Give us the wisdom to look at this situation today as a time for us not to desire to be right or to second guess others, but to work together toward a conclusion. Lord, in our role this evening, we as a board are here to make the best decisions possible in our current situation. Please guide us to make decisions in the best interest of all involved, but Lord, help us especially to continue to meet the needs of our students in a way that continues their education yet comforts them when school routine is no longer routine. We know that our students will follow our lead in dealing with the day-to-day situation as it stands and as it changes. We pray for families who are meeting unforeseen obstacles and, Lord, help us all to come through on the other side as better, kinder people. In the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Dr. Nation. One thing you said in that prayer is not getting political and having servant leaders. One thing I do appreciate about this board is, you know, walking into night, the last thing on my mind was hearing a bunch of us talk about politics and anything but what's best for the students of Tyler ISD at this moment in time. And I do appreciate that about this group and I'm thankful to work with all of you. We do not have any action coming out of executive session, so we do have public participation next. And we have two speakers. Okay. First up is Ms. Betty Mitchell. How are you doing tonight, Ms. Mitchell?
Good evening to everyone. To Dr. Crawford and to the board, I just want to thank you for the opportunity and want to thank you for the work that you do here with the board. And before I tell you why I'm here, I want to also thank Reverend Mrs. Mason for her work. We know that her term is coming to an end and we really do want to thank you for how you've represented our community. I'm here to speak on behalf of various members within the community. I was one of Freeman Sterling's campaign chair for the work that he's done. And so, we in District 3 are really interested in this position. We're interested in our community being represented and served, and so we thought long and hard. We've met with various ones in the community. Freeman served on the panelistic council. Freeman was a member of College Hill. He was a member of the Mager. And in all of his activities at his death, various ones came and asked, you know, please don't give up, please stay engaged, please find someone that would represent and speak on behalf of our community. We found that person. We thought about giving you a laundry of list of individuals. There were about 40 of us that came together before the pandemic came and looked at, you know, possibilities of an individual. And then we've met with various ones in all of these various different groups. They wanted to come tonight, but we want to honor you and respect this meeting. And so, I'm here to speak on behalf of the one that we are requesting that you consider. And that would be Mrs. Yvonne Atkins. Yvonne Atkins is a God-fearing woman. She is an educator. She has served our community well. She has the heart to serve the people, the students, and she's always looking in the best interest of those that are in the school district. We think that she works very collaboratively with groups. We think that she would be an added addition. The district had several different individuals that we were interested in, but we thought with Mrs. Mason leaving that we were really interested in having an educator to be on the board, someone that knew the district, knew the children, knew the schools. And so, with that, we're asking for your consideration. I have to, for full disclosure, say that we did speak to Mrs. Mason, we did speak to Mr. Washman. We had a small meeting, you know, identifying the issues and things that we will be concerned with, and we think that she would be an excellent representative for the district and would be a good fit in representing the district and working with you on the school board. So with that, I just wanted to come before you and ask that you consider her as an individual that will work well for District 3. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mitchell. I don't think so. We appreciate you.
Enjoy your evening.
Okay, you too. Okay. And, it's been a while, but Bob Brewer is the next up in public participation. Mr. Brewer, it's been a while.
Yeah, we've been in the hospital.
Oh, no.
Thanks for the lead-in. Yeah. Good evening and thank you for this opportunity again. I wish I did not have to feel compelled to speak tonight, but after questioning seven Texas Supreme Court Justice-level justices and almost many of the Democrat and Republican primary candidates for this election, I just have to speak. My question, what is on the first page of the United States Code? What is the first law in America? What are America's first principles? The answer is in this book. It's the same book that's in the basement of the courthouse in the law library, at the Smith County Law Library. And by the way, the librarian who's been there for a couple decades didn't know what was on the first page. Nobody else seems to. I hope with our education system, we can do something to train our students from pre-K to post-doc what's on page one of the entirety of U.S. law. Since no one I questioned knew the answer, I felt compelled to tell you so that you can tell your teachers at every grade level why the U.S. Constitution was written to protect the 35 words in the second sentence on page one of this U.S. Code. This sentence is so important, it is said to be the most important written in America and perhaps the world. We hold these truths to be self-evident. That means that everyone, regardless of their education, will know without study that these truths are true. That all men, that means men, women, child, no matter the skin color, race, language, age, political or economic status, are created equal. This means that all humans, at the moment of creation, are created equal and should be respected as such. Endowed, that means supplied permanently by their Creator. No matter what your religion, all of the blessings surrounding us were created by something. That's our Creator. With certain, that means without doubt. Unalienable rights, that which cannot be given away, cannot be taken away, cannot be bartered, traded, bought, or sold. Rights, the only perfect standard of truth and justice, or plainly, the will of God. That among these are life. This is life given by the Creator at creation that demands that that life be protected at all stages, ages, stages, regardless of challenges of that life. Liberty, that means freedom from restraint. It's basically freedom with religion. Property, which is probably the most important on the list, they had to take it out because of the slaves were considered property and it wouldn't pass if they left it in there. And the pursuit of happiness, which was meant to be property, the substitute for the word property. So anyway, if you open this book or go to the library, on page one, this is the first law of America. And nobody knows it, except you do now, and I hope all your students will after tonight. And Constitution Week's coming up, September 17th. September 12th is a Saturday and September 19th is a Saturday. And what I would like to do is offer a day-long, two days, 12th and 19th, series of lectures, movies, presentations, and discussion on the Constitution and why it's so important and why it was written to protect our life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Okay. Now that we have done public participation, moving along to the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes in items A and B? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, motion carries. Continuous improvement in student outcomes, we have an AP and dual credit update coming To describe the room, for anybody who might be watching online, it is us and nobody else besides Gina about 80 yards away at the back of the room. And we are ushering in people from outside in the hall to come speak, so there's a little bit of a walk to get to where we are in these interesting times. And we also have our attorney.
Do I need to tell them to come in here?
And the tech guy.
Are they watching on the other? They gotta be watching the other rooms.
Got the thumbs up.
Distance warning.
Yeah. There he is. Oh, we're ready for you.
Did I saw him off in here tonight? Thank you for that.
Let me get that thing stopped.
My ears might be bleeding now.
Board President Washman, Dr. Crawford, and trustees, I appreciate the opportunity to share some information with our AP and dual credit program at this point in the school year. We come to you two times a year. This is the mid-year update and we'll come back again in the summer with some more summative data. Just a reminder, and we've shared this before, but the three primary areas that we look at when we talk about college, career, and military readiness are, of course, college readiness. You see the measures and that's what we'll be talking about primarily this evening. The career readiness, that focuses a lot on our CTE certifications and enlistment in the United States Armed Forces. Specifically this evening with the advanced academics update, we're looking at students who are scoring a three or higher on their AP exams. And then we're looking at the students that earn three hours of college credit in English or math or cumulatively nine hours in all of their college credit subjects. Last spring, we had an opportunity to talk about and bring to you a new goal in the area of student outcomes and continuous improvement in this area. And so, we established a baseline based on the taper report and the accountability figures at that time that we said we wanted to see increase by 4% annually. That was our goal that we had set at the time. So the baseline data based on the 2018 Texas Academic Performance Report had us 47.7%, just a little under 50% of our graduates were achieving that status of being considered college, career, and military-ready. The year-one target, which would have been based on the report that came out this past fall, a few months ago, we wanted to see that increase to over 50% to 51.7. And then year-two target, 2020 taper, to jump again and up to right at 56%. And then finally, to see us approach 60% on the 2021 taper. When we did get our Texas Academic Performance Report rating back, we actually, in the year-one target, were at 63.4%, so we saw a pretty significant jump, really even more than we had anticipated. So that puts us definitely, I mean, I'd say that we're definitely on track, but we want to continue to see that figure grow. And a lot of what I'm going to share tonight is related to that specific, that number. This is looking at the past couple of years of our AP exam that students have taken and then the number that we have registered students for in the current year that they will be taking in a couple of months. So you can see that number, we had the dip. I shared this with you last year, a little bit of a dip last year in the number of exams taken for a couple of different reasons. I won't go back into that, we've already shared that previously, but we moved online exclusively with our AP exam registration this year, and we're really not anticipating seeing this much growth, but are excited that we have this many students that have actually registered online, they've paid, they're in the system, and they're prepared to take AP exams. And that's 1,175. So if you looked in at the projections or what we're thinking in terms of the number of students that'll score three or higher on an AP exam, and then ultimately the percentage, just a couple of projections if you were to look at, if we were to hit right around a 50% passing rate, that would see us approach 600, just a little less than 600 scores of three or higher. And if we would get where we anticipate and hope to be at 55% passing or higher, that's going to be closer to 650 AP exams of three or higher. So that's just kind of to give you a ballpark figure where we're hoping that we can get our students. And I will say at this time, since we're on the subject, that a college board is working around the clock to roll out information. I actually have a brand-new review that's coming through YouTube online for AP students to begin the review process. Most of the materials are already online for AP courses, so that's giving students an advantage to be able to not miss any instructional material during this time. And then they're working on a flexible AP exam schedule for students that have already registered. And actually, right now, the way that it's being shared, at least at this point, is that students will have an opportunity to even do that from home using their login. I don't have the details on that, we'll wait for college board to roll that out, but they're working on it and sharing updates pretty much daily. This is looking at the advanced academics enrollment in the district, in the AP courses and the dual credit courses, and you can see year by year what those numbers look like. This is now the third year in a row that we see a little bit of a decrease in the number of students enrolling in advanced placement courses. Not a huge dip, but we've talked about this before, that we're seeing just a few more students move over and take advantage of the dual credit opportunities. So the total numbers, when you're looking at totals, actually you see that we went up last year about 355 students in total advanced academics enrollment. And then this year, compared to last year, we went up almost 500 students because of that significant growth in our dual credit program. So that's just looking at both programs side by side and what's happening. This is some information that looks at all of our students that are enrolled in high school, freshmen, sophomore, junior, and senior students, and it compares where we are in terms of the region, Region 7 in our area, and then where we are in terms of the state. So you can see these last three years, Tyler ISD students, remember it's all high school students, I won't read all the numbers to you, but we went up about 10 percentage points last year, and then this year, we've seen a bump of close to 13 percentage points. And remember, that's nine through 12, taking any advanced academics course. So pre-AP, AP, and dual credit will be included. You can see where Region 7 is, and they've made a pretty significant gain. This past year, we're quite a bit ahead of our region in terms of students enrolled in advanced academics courses, and then we've moved ahead these last couple of years in the state. And that's the figure I'm interested in, almost 13% increase from last year to this year. This is just a bar graph kind of showing, you can look at the gray bar there that represents 2017. We were ahead of the region as far as enrollment in advanced academics, but trailing just a little behind the state. In 2018, we went ahead and bumped past the state. And now you can see that blue graph, that's the current year, and we actually are significantly ahead of where the state is in enrollment in advanced academics courses. That is, there's a lot of information related to this topic, but this is the information I have to share with you, this mid-year update.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. It's always good to see these charts. This is one place we always are outpacing the state, it seems like, and our region. Always good to see those things. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Is that the same thing, both state average or local region average?
Yep. I noticed from 2017 to now, or 2019, we're up 23% and that's very impressive.
Our teachers, it's really focused on the teachers and communicating all the way down into the middle schools, the significance of taking these advanced academics courses.
I would like to say you accepted this challenge and you have been doing a wonderful job. You came in running and you're still running, and I hope we'll continue to see the growth that we see.
Appreciate it. This is a team effort. This is teachers and parents and students committed.
Well, just real quick before you get out of here, Gary, you can't do this without a dang good higher ed partner.
Yes.
And TJC, you know, been around this now for a while. TJC does a great job. I mean, they really truly operate as a four-year, almost like a four-year Midwest college, you know, Midwest arts college, liberal arts college, but they're just pretty accessible, great facilities, great climate, and great personnel, just outstanding leadership. Dr. Metke now into Dr. Mahia. So we do have a true advantage here in Tyler, Texas, and we have for a long time. It's not just like TJC got better overnight. It's been a great place. A lot of great people have gone to school there, a lot of people in Tyler that are very successful have gone there. So we're very appreciative of that, very fortunate and blessed to have that with us. Definitely.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Stay safe and healthy.
He's trying to find the men of Kyle to play on his way up, but I couldn't find them.
Okay. Now, what were we going to pull from the business legal finance consent agenda?
I need to pull B.
We will pull B.
G and I.
And C. And G. And I.
B, C, G, and I.
Okay. Okay. Before we get to those, do I have a motion to approve all items with the exception of B, C, G, and I?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Going on to item B. Marty, could you tell us a little bit about that?
Item B is a refund of the issuance of amount not to exceed 123,125,000 of Tyler Independent School District Unlimited Refunding Bonds, taxable Series 2020. There is Dusty Trailer joining us via Skype or something, Teams, something.
Wow.
Microsoft Teams chat, and we're going to let Dusty take it from here. Appreciate you joining us, Dusty. Go ahead and let us know what you got.
Good evening, everyone. It is great to be joining you tonight, and I hope to be able to see you all in person very soon. I was watching, being born, I was maybe kind of hoping walk-up music.
No walk-up music for you, man. You gotta walk up to have walk-up music.
I understand. I understand. I think mine is more of a beam-me-up music.
Right.
The item before you this evening is an item seeking to refinance portion of the district's outstanding bonds, specifically the Series 2013 bond. It's a presentation that I think is going to be on the screen for you. If you look on page number two, page number two is a net profile for the district that shows the district's outstanding bond portfolio. This portfolio has 417.415 million dollars of bonds outstanding. Very level debt service pay structure that will gradually be tapering down. And what we're focusing on, what we're focusing on here specifically is the Series 2013 bond. I'm going to move to slide three. Tyler ISD has done a great job over the years of manically its bond portfolio. It's been here since slide number three, kind of a myth of the historical box of funding and redemption that you as a board and your administration have proactive undertaken to manage the debt portfolio of the district. Over the course of the last eight years, you have either redeemed or refunded a total of 131,76 million dollars of bond. And I hope that you have generated service savings, or in other words, interest cost reduction for the district and the taxpayers of the district totaling 22,68,860 dollars. So the item before you tonight, just seeking to refinance Series 2013 bond. Now, there are a couple of things that I want to visit with you about that relates to that. The numbers that are on the screen this evening are from our analysis that was run back in February. At that time, the market was very, very favorable, and we were able to generate a tremendous amount of savings at that time. As part of the current event of coronavirus, the market has had a dislocation, and interest rates have picked up. But the item before you tonight is a parameter resolution that allows the district to get the items in place that are net there to actually go out into the market to refinance the bond. So back in February, what we were looking at was a total savings of about 24.5 million dollars, and that worked out to just a little over 1 million dollars per year in savings, 1,650,000 dollars in savings. When we look at that savings on that today, 17.89 million dollars, and on a percentage And then I will turn over to page number five to just show you how that savings would accrue on an annualized basis. If you look at the table there on page five, the column there that is designated net savings tells about what we had anticipated to be that's paid for in the balance of the year. You'll see that right around 1,600,000 dollars per year in annual debt service savings. So moving forward from tonight, once the board proves that we're in the preliminary stage and obtaining the permanent school guarantee for state of funding, and then we'll just try to have our spokes in the district in position as to monitor the market, get out into the market to take advantage of hopefully a low-end credit box becoming a situation right now. get out into the market to take advantage of hopefully a low-end rate of coming in situation from here right now. Now, one of the things also that's a little bit unique about the refinance plan is it is assuming the tax of declaring all your bonds are currently outstanding in a tax exempt form. But in order to affect and advance refunding of bonds right now, we have to use tax, the taxable market. To back in fact, the interest rate differential between the taxable, tax exempt, very important rule, he's up high against the whole generation.
Okay. All right.
That concludes my question.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was gonna, I didn't want to cut you off or anything like that if you had more to say, but we do have your presentation in front of us, and we do understand that the market at this moment in time is probably pretty volatile, but but we trust, just as you always have, that y'all can go out and save us some money and the taxpayers of Tyler, Texas, some money when the time is right.
I've got a question.
Andy does have a question for you, Dusty, so he'll be talking.
Hey, how are you?
Very good. Good to see you, Andy.
Good. Okay, so as Mr. Washman said it, things are very volatile right now. What's the worst-case scenario for us under this situation? Are we under terms now that we could continue with indefinitely? This resolution just allows you to refinance if it's right, but if not, we are under a current term, or are we having a term expire on these bonds?
Your current bond, the Series 2013 bond, are in a fixed rate of interest mode right now. The parameter resolution will elide for a period of each month. And so if we're not able to find a real level of saving to finance those bonds during this sick period, this resolution would be moot. We'll have to come back to the board at that time to have reconciliation.
Okay, but there's not, we're not gonna be forced into a sale position at some point if things don't improve?
Absolutely not. That's your exact word. We will not be selling it, this bond, if we do not, do not.
Okay. Okay, so we're giving y'all the authority for a period of six months to look at the market and sell at the time when you feel like the market's in its best conditions for us. And if six months comes and goes, then we don't have to sell, we can stay at the fixed interest rate that we're in right now and take another look again at a future date.
That's correct.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? I think Fritz does.
Dusty, so you mentioned transitioning from tax exempt to the taxable bond market. Obviously, you're not gonna do this unless we get lower interest rates. Is the term of the bond changing? Are we pushing this out, or the term staying the same?
Great question. Great question. The term of bond will not be extended. The term of the bond would have the same final maturity that it currently have.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any comments?
In terms of the parameter, you mentioned if we can have, quote-unquote, I think you said, just significant savings. We haven't seen the resolution yet. Is that, how do you define significant savings?
The parameter resolution sets a minimum savings threshold of four percent on present value basis. And that, the authority to move forward with that, I believe, is with Dr. Crawford and Mr. York. We've gotta have at least before that, for the board to move forward.
Okay.
Keeper on that, and anytime we've done this, they've done a really good job of jumping on that. So twenty years plus experience with that with Tasha, I think's a pretty good security blanket for the board, as you've done before. And Dusty's about as good as they come. I mean, you got a pretty conservative guy that's managing your debt service from afar. Plus, he's from Tyler. You may not be let back into the community if you mess this up, Dusty.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Dusty? Everybody's good? Okay, so thank you, Dusty. We appreciate you, and I'll entertain a motion on item B.
I thought we were gonna get the motion, I mean, we're gonna get the resolution to revisit.
Different resolution.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve item B.
I move that we approve item B.
Do I have a second?
Oh, it's got a.
Will you make the motion and test that there?
We have a special motion to read.
Okay, the motion is I move that the Board of Trustees authorize the issuance of Tyler ISD refunding bonds by adopting the order provided by the district's Bond Council and based on the discussion presented by our financial advisor this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Burkfield. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dusty.
Thank you. Great to be with you this evening.
Stay healthy, man.
You too. Stay healthy.
Y'all stay well.
Take care.
Take care, I just.
Okay, moving on to item C, which is the approval of gifts and donations. It's always fun to highlight these and hear about who's doing what out there in the community.
Very cool tonight that we're able to, again, talk about how great our community is to provide funds above and beyond what our our normal budget provides, but tonight in front of the board from Cooperative Teacher Credit Union, those guys are always around, those guys and gals, recipient to Tyler ISD Communications in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Very appreciative of them doing that. The Tyler Lee Baseball Club to the Tyler Lee Baseball Team, seven thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars seventy-six cents. And then from Adrian and Tiffany Harvey to John Tyler High School, the Alma Harvey Hope Scholarship of five thousand dollars. Very excited that these go out to a lot of different parts of our school system with these donations tonight. So, board, there you go for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion or any comments concerning gifts and donations?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and accept with grateful hearts the donations and contributions presented tonight.
So I'll second, and Bill, you want to put, Dr. Crawford said, I don't see that they're going to avoid the different quizzes for the district.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries, and it does just highlight not only what we get to see every month with people donating to the district, but you know, right now, the community is really coming together and helping each other out, and I think the nation is too throughout this. And it's just another good thing to highlight. So, moving on to item G, which is consider the approval of naming of the John Tyler High School Theater and the Moore Middle School Gymnasium.
Thank you, Mr. Washman. It's my pleasure to actually present to individuals tonight for the naming of certain parts of facilities that'll honor their service to the school system. I believe at your place, do you have these, this bio? Gina, do they have the bios at their place?
I think they're on page thirty-one.
They're in the packet. Okay, good. Yeah, we got them in the packet. That's good, okay. Absolutely. To do them honor, I do believe that we should go ahead and actually read these bios to give the public a good dose of what they meant to the school system. Al Harris began his Tyler ISD career at Moore Middle School in nineteen seventy as a science teacher and coach. He served as head coach and campus athletic director. Coach Harris had the good fortune of coaching Heisman Trophy winner Earl Campbell, as well as many other fine men. Mr. Harris moved in the position of principal in nineteen eighty until retirement in nineteen ninety-seven after a successful teaching and coaching career. Moore's faculty, staff, and students were duly recognized after the nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety school year for having the most improved test scores in Texas. In nineteen ninety-three, Moore Middle School received the Governor's Excellence Award. Mr. Harris based his administrative philosophy on high expectations for teachers and students and maintaining discipline among the students while instituting curricular and co-curricular programs that focused on the skills necessary to exceed state of Texas standards. It's our privilege tonight to provide this opportunity to name the gymnasium at Moore Middle School after Al Harris. Dr. Martin L. Edwards, Jr. Dr. Martin L. Edwards, Jr. was a former Tyler Independent School District Board Member and Community Physician. He was elected to the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees in nineteen sixty-nine and was the first African-American to have this honor, serving on the board until nineteen eighty-seven. He was the first African-American to serve as the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees President from nineteen seventy-four to seventy-five and Vice President from nineteen seventy-seven to seventy-eight. Dr. Edwards served the board as a statesman, where he professionally governed the transition of Tyler ISD schools during integration. Dr. Edwards' service ensured all children would have the same educational opportunities across the city and school system. It's an honor to put before y'all to name the new John Tyler High School, I always call it ISD, John Tyler High School Theater after Dr. Martin L. Edwards, Jr.
Sure.
How many years did he serve as a school board member from sixty-eighty-nine to eighty-seven?
Sixty-nine to eighty-seven. Yes, ma'am.
Both sound like incredible men and very deserving of this honor, and I'm excited to be a part of this. I feel like men like these two men really embodied Tyler and Tyler ISD and their legacy of service now will be remembered with their name on a building, and that is really, really neat. And Al Harris was my principal at Moore Middle School. Back in the days, I think when you said we had the best test score turnaround in the state, when was that, ninety-three or four?
I think yours was the strict discipline part.
Hey, defy it. Drug-free youth in Texas, a hundred percent, two years ago.
Eighty-nine, ninety.
A little before me. That's okay. Yeah, I was. I was, totally. Okay, well, this is really exciting, and I wish we had a room full of people that could adequately celebrate and give them a round of applause, but I know everybody's cheering them at home, and maybe one day we'll get to have a ceremony in which everybody can come.
Maybe we take these separately.
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea. So, we will, may I entertain a motion? We'll take John Tyler High School first for Dr. Edwards. May I have an, entertain a motion for that?
I was considered his goddaughter. He was my doctor and a role model in the community and a neighbor. And it is with pride and joy that I move that the new John Tyler Theater be named the Dr. Martin L. Edwards, the Second Theater.
Thank you, Mrs. Mason. Do I have a second? Thank you, Dr. Nation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to the Edwards family. Okay, now I will entertain a motion to name the Moore Middle School Gymnasium after Al Harris.
Mr. Washman, I'll make the motion that we name the gymnasium at Moore Middle School after Mr. Al Harris. Wonderful. Both of these men, as has been said, very dedicated to our school district and very dedicated to their service as a board member and as a teacher, coach, principal, all the way through. So thank you for your dedication.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burkfield. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and now Moore Middle School Gymnasium will be called the Al Harris Gymnasium. Congratulations to the Harris family.
That's great.
Nice.
Very fun to be a part of that. It is. Okay, the only item we have left in this section is item I. Consider the approval of competitive sealed proposals for concessions and lighting for selected athletic facilities.
Yeah, it's Mr. Loper. Oh, there he is. He was waiting. It's Mr. Loper.
No walk-up music. Take it easy, man.
Loper makes his way to the lectern, Professor Loper, to the lectern. We're presenting tonight for lighting and concessions. Lighting tonight for the middle schools at Moore, Three Lakes, and Bolter Middle Schools, and concessions at Three Lakes and Moore Middle Schools. Bolter's concessions and restroom facilities were programmed into that new facility. Tonight, we have that in front of y'all, and Mr. Loper's gonna be here to answer any questions that we may have. We're also providing this to lessen some of the strain that we have at our high school facilities as far as playing middle school games there as well, as well as making sure that the high school practice fields are truly noted for the high school practice, to have them cut middle school, or high school practices short for middle schools to begin their games, et cetera. So we've got that in front of you and for your consideration.
Mr. Loper, can I, Mr. Washman?
Absolutely.
Start this off. Okay, so Three Lakes, we're putting a concession somewhere inside the fence?
Yes, sir. It's on the same side of the bleachers, the existing bleachers, and it is just south of those bleachers. There's a flat area right there that works very well for us.
Did we run power down there and water or anything before? Are we gonna have to do all that now?
We have to do that now.
Okay.
And sewer.
Yes, all right. And then at Moore?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Moore is up behind, up on top of the hill, behind the concrete bleachers.
Yeah.
And we have to do the same. We have to run the power, the communications, and sewer to that one as well. And we are going to fence that area in there so you can actually control and take tickets.
Okay. As far as your selection process, I notice, who was on the, was it a committee?
Yeah, basically, it was Perry Thompson, who's our architect, myself, Brady Beddingfield, and Cherie Jones.
Okay, so it was an in-house committee?
Yes, sir.
Scored this, okay. And was each category weighted the same, or was price more?
Price was like thirty-six points. It had the majority of it, and then we split to equal one hundred from thirty-six. The other four categories, or is it five, evenly. So I think it was like sixteen points per category after that to equal a hundred.
Okay. And have you, yeah, okay. Have you notified these contractors what the scores were, or were you waiting till after tonight?
I'm waiting till after tonight. I have talked to them personally, though, and given each one of them kind of a heads up, and of course, offered to debrief any of them. And there's a couple of contractors that would very much appreciate that, and I'm intending on doing that.
Okay.
Because you may have some, what some of these scores don't reflect is, and I'll give you an example. give you an example, two of the lower bids were incomplete, so we had to score on low. And they may, you may have one contractor in that had the best price but did not score well enough to maintain that thirty-six points and the overall, uh, average to, to win the bid.
Okay. All, this is just a little different process. You know, I'm familiar with us over the years doing kinda different ones, but, you know, an in-house scoring is a little different process, and I just wanna make sure that, um, you know, that y'all have talked to and made, that the process was fair and that everybody involved in it thought it was fair. That's all I really care about.
Absolutely.
Is that it was a fair process and that the contractors understood how you got to the place you got. And I'm assuming this is a, a legal way to reward contracts, or you wouldn't be here today.
That's correct.
All right. That's all I have.
One question. Um, so you mentioned there were some incomplete bids. Among the completed bids, is the bid you're recommending the lowest cost of the completed bids?
It is.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Uh, and I do have one, just to reiterate, this does cover lighting at the high schools for baseball, softball, tennis, practice fields.
No, sir. This is just the middle school lighting and concession stands.
That bid was that we'd also bid that out?
Design documents.
Exactly.
Okay, I got you. I got you. Okay.
And that'll, that'll be coming at a later date?
Yes, we do intend on coming back.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, to make sure I was tracking there.
Well, that gets into the question of the funding on this. This is out of restricted fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
For capital projects. So this is kinda the same way we've done this with Mike Carter base, the turf on the baseball field, uh, the pool, the, uh, the, uh, Rose Stadium, that's a pretty big one.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna forget about that one, but, you know, over time, we've been able to manage our annual budget every year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, been very, uh, protective of the taxpayers' dollars, be able to give them raises every year, and also been able to strategically put some of this money back so we can do some of this, uh, as well, so.
Okay.
Not bond dollars.
Anybody have any other questions or comments for Mr. Loper? Okay, I will entertain a motion for Item I. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Loper.
Thank you, Mr. Loper. Uh, all right. Moving on to our curriculum instruction and consent agenda. Uh, what do we have on there, Marty?
Um, two items. Uh, this is the annual instructional materials allotment, annual certification. It's on page thirty-seven of your agenda. And then B is actually some of the Project Search spots that we have at Christus Trinity Mother Francis Health System. Uh, the tuition agreements are now, um, we have some spots that are open, and we've, we've occupied all of our Tyler ISD spots and some of the Smith County, um, school districts may not have enough, uh, students to be able to plug in those other spots. We're actually opening up to the other Region Seven school systems, if they wanna participate. Very popular program, very neat program. I encourage you to get interested in that. I'm very excited about being able to offer this to other East Texas school systems when there are spots available.
I'll take this one as a pair unless anybody has any questions or comments on either one of them and wants to separate them.
I'll just say real quick that I had a, uh, Project Search student that was gonna be in my department this, uh, this next cycle. Um, so I hate that he didn't get to, he was there for about five days, and, uh, he was awesome. It was great having him around.
Good program.
Yeah, it's a neat program. Y'all should come check it out. But I'll, uh, move to approve curriculum instruction consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Uh, okay, now we have a superintendent staff report on community mitigation period and our update on that.
So going around right now, I have a little communicate to the board, just some executive summary over some different items. In regard to this, uh, the COVID-nineteen response, it's kind of a pretty real-time thing that you've got in front of you, just created today, and I've got some other data that I can actually share with you, um, as well. The, uh, I'm just gonna read this since we have a public meeting. It's a televised meeting, and they can't really see it right now, so I know y'all can read. So let me just go over some of these highlights. It'll also spur some conversation. And then when we get done with this, we've got folks that are waiting in the, behind the wall back there to actually bring them in to maybe give you some, just a couple of updates. Shawna Hiddle's back there for professional, professional development, teaching and learning. Her shop kinda created the, the online stuff that we have. Uh, great job there. Dr. Hanson's back there as well. She's kinda responsible for the, um, the actual hard copy packets that we're, that we're providing as well, along with some other consumable and ancillary materials. Um, Ron Jones is back there for any personnel questions that you may have. Who else is back there, Gina? Oh, Rachel Barber, uh, Director of Health Services, maybe someone that we wanna hear from as well, and others. We'll get to them. So the first bullet I have on here is one, the first thing I woke up to this morning, of course, the day one right here on this extended learning period, the distance learning project that we've got going on, one of our principals tweeted out, "Connection over perfection and grace over pace." And I think, um, you know, our expectations are that this is something that we are going to do excellent, but at the same time, we ought to have to be realistic that we created a hybrid school system, um, within, within a week's span last week. And so I think that's one thing that we need to, to continuously tell ourselves, and maybe even to tell our parents, 'cause I know that a lot of them are, are really, um, filled with anxiety in regard, "How am I gonna teach my kids?" So, um, understand we're not expecting perfection out of that. Our biggest deal is we want to provide something to our students during this very uncertain time, this very extraordinary time, and that we just wanna make sure we make connection with you. We want our teachers making connection with the students and the parents, uh, just to have that personal contact with them as well. And then grace over pace. We're not trying to run a sprint right now. Um, we don't, we don't know what the, the end line looks like right now. Um, we have some dreams and some hopes, um, that, that this can get over with quick, but we wanna make sure we have grace for ourselves, not just for the school, school system, but for the parents at home. Uh, we understand, we're, we're not trying to, to, to set any speed records in regard to curriculum. And you gotta look no, you need to look no for, further than the state of Texas, um, who has, uh, been gracious enough to where the, the governor and the, the Commissioner of Education has provided some relief in regard to star testing, along with the, uh, end-of-course exams as well. Um, just some, uh, just some, uh, how we've kinda handled some things with people that traveled over spring break. Had twenty-plus individuals in travel-related self-quarantine that'll last until this Sunday night. Um, I think I barely made it myself because it was, looks like any international airport might've been a, uh, a location for, for, for folks to, to maybe self-quarantine. And then about two-hundred-plus students in the same category. That was really a concern for us, um, as we were going to, to, uh, to, to this week, um, because we were, you know, if we were to come back on Monday, which we're not allowed to because the governor issued the order, that was gonna have to be something that we really had to manage. You know, getting in that fourteen-day quarantine period that you've all been hearing about, um, just to be safe, uh, was something that we were gonna have to manage and communicate out to everyone. But everybody falls within that, to that one, um, uh, that one category except for one person who, who got stuck. I'm gonna give them a wink on the TV, on the live stream right now. It looks like a quarantine till April fifth. So, um, in contact with that one employee quite frequently and, and certainly glad that they were able to make it back, uh, and, and, and be repatriated as a, as a Texan, as an American fairly recently. We fed five thousand students in Week One, and we, we believe it needs to be about four to five thousand students every day. And let me read you my update that I got right before I walked into this meeting. This was from Victor Oliveras, our Director of Food Service. Dr. Crawford, today was crazy. Uh, busy day at our sites. I was at Caldwell, and we fed five hundred twenty-nine there and had been feeding two hundred to two hundred twenty-five. Uh, the curriculum packets certainly added to the numbers, so we'll see how we continue the rest of this week. Today, we fed a total of two thousand three hundred twenty-eight kids. So we, we did in one day half of what we did all week last week as well. Plan moving forward for this week, uh, we're gonna add Pete and Austin on Wednesday as feeding sites. On Thursday, um, they're gonna add ore and rice as production sites. That way, we can have enough food being made, and we will have the buses run daily to seven apartments out of those two production sites. Um, they've received information from Mr. Baggart and Transportation on the number of students per apartment runs, and have chosen those with the most Tyler ISD-populated residents. I'm anticipating at least an added four hundred meals at those mobile sites. Um, so that's kind of the food service update in real time today. Uh, commend those, those staff persons. Y'all know we've also partnered with Mentoring Alliance and the East Texas Food Bank. They've been able to hand out twenty-pound, uh, food boxes as long as they're available. The Food Bank did the, the backpack program Friday as well, so a lot of coordination there, not just between, uh, uh, food services of ours, but also with counseling services and campus staff as well. Bolter, Three Lakes, Hubbard, Moore, Caldwell, Griffin, Pete, and Austin are food and learning packet distribution sites. We did run out of packets today, full disclosure. We printed over five hundred thousand pieces of paper over the weekend, and that's, we ran out at some sites. Now we, you know, so we had to rush over here some of them. So we also have consumables. You, you remember the workbooks, Reverend Mason?
Yes.
We also have those at the elementary and middle schools, that we're gonna be able to release those to the parents that may not have.
That's good.
Um, you know, the, the means for Wi-Fi or even some tablet, uh, tablet or Chromebooks. We're also, um, breaking down some of the, the Chromebook carts to where we're gonna be able to check out some of those as well. So if you have Wi-Fi at your house and you don't have, um, a device, you may be able to use that. We do ask, since I know a lot of people are watching this right now, we do ask to, um, be discerning whenever you want a, when you, when you're, when you want a, a device. You know, for instance, if mom and dad are having to work from home now, and you've got three devices and you've got four kids, our curriculum is not designed for all day, every day. So just adding a, another device to a, to a household that's already got three devices is not what we're going for here. We're trying to get the devices to where we need them the most. And our principals are kinda going through that, and, um, got a lot of pressure and strain on those principals to kinda be the person who decides whether it goes. We've got about, I believe, we've got five thousand of those district-wide for, for distribution. It's not very many, but at the same time, um, we certainly wanna ma- make sure that that happens. So the distance learning program was energized today. We all giggled about that earlier before the board meeting about getting into clever and all the password-protected stuff, and again, this is where that grace over pace, I'm looking out into the, to the camera, that's, that grace over pace will certainly be something that we all need to practice, um, as we go forward. Again, we do have the blended opportunities of the e-learning and the consumable products as well. Talked about the campuses dissembling the tech carts. Uh, teachers, this is a standard that, that we came up with. Teachers and campuses are to make their very best attempts at two social-emotional, uh, contacts per week via phone, email, text, or video conferencing. We think that's important. That's that connection over perfection pieces of this that we're talking about. Um, it's very new for our teachers, it's very new for our students, it's extremely new for our parents, and we wanna do what we can to maybe ease your child's, uh, anxiousness by having some contact with that teacher that they love so much. Certainly grade level appropriate as well. I don't know how, how many high school seniors are just looking forward to that, so I got one of those, too. Uh, teachers are to utilize district video resources, um, and/or popular social media tools to produce general academic content videos. Um, we, we need more and more of this with our students. We want them to be able to interact with our students as appropriate, and sometimes as educators, we get stuck in our ways. We, while we may love Google Classroom or Flipgrid, the most popular platforms are YouTube and Instagram, so we have to adjust a little bit. We have trained our teachers, uh, again, I had to take the training again this weekend on the appropriateness of using social media tools. So, uh, that's something that maybe Shawna can talk about, Ms. Hiddle can talk about. Special ed students in some apartment complexes, um, actually saw consumable deliveries today. Um, momentum builds, and our resources are staged and accumulated. We'll, we'll mobilize and, and deploy food, food and learning materials at Moore sites via transportation and out into the community. That's gonna be a good way to use our transportation department, and we'll actually be partnering, um, with Mentoring Alliance and utilizing their staff as well. Um, the reason we're using them is they are approved volunteers with background checks already done. I know there's been a, a, a pretty good rush, not like whenever I had a little issue back in my career seven years ago. There's been a pretty good rush from the community on volunteering, and we're, we're very thankful that we do have folks like Mentoring Alliance, East Texas Food Bank, United Way, that, that could utilize some volunteers kinda away from the school system. If we get a rush of volunteers on the school system, that's gonna overload us, and we're gonna be doing a lot of volunteer management, and as, as, and kinda getting away from our mission. So we really are, you know, wanting them to maybe go towards the Mentoring Alliance and, you know, pitching them a nickel or two, or a ten-dollar bill here and there, an online donation to those, uh, those partners will go a long way to helping them as well. We do have essential staff at campuses and at administration complexes that will continue to work and have regular office hours, um, as long as, as we're allowed to do that. Uh, the buildings are not open to the public, but there are es- essential operations that need to be conducted. Payroll is a, is a daily thing for us, no matter what happens, and we can't take, take anyone off of that, um, of that function. We've got outstanding facilities in Tyler ISD, and you can't let them just sit. And, you know, if we get a rain come in and we don't have anybody walk in the building or, or know what's going on, we certainly wanna be able to plug a, maybe a leaky roof. We don't have a lot of those. We have great roofs, but we wanna make sure we're, we're there, Johnny on the spot, along with air conditioners. If, if they break down, wanna keep the humidity, uh, controlled as best we can. That's what really makes a building get yucky and, uh, and, and whatnot. So we do have custodial workers in maintenance and then a rotation of our food service staff so we can keep them fresh as well. And then, oh, by the way, construction, um, we're still moving forward on time, within budget, uh, as far as the two huge construction projects that we have right now. We're staying in constant contact with WRL, uh, our general contractor, to make sure that, that, uh, that we can stay forward on that. We do have some, um, some opportunity there to, to, uh, you know, i- if things were to, to get a little bit crazy as far as extension of this, there may be some efficiencies there to, where actually we can move the schedule up a little bit. So there's your executive summary. Um, we can start calling some folks in, or if y'all just have general questions you wanna ask me. If I don't know the answer, I'll get somebody just holding on to that question whenever they come in. You can ask them for that, but I, I might have the answer. Hope I do.
I have one, Dr. Crawford. First of all, let me express my appreciation, uh, for making sure that our students are fed and the families are accessed, and at least the opportunity is there. And, uh, I hope the families will, uh, access that. That's a privilege as well as a blessing. Now, when you're delivering food to the apartments, what process are you using? Is it delivered to a certain spot? Uh, the people who live there know, the residents know that that time the bus will arrive, or how are you doing that?
Yeah, that's a question. I, I don't know the logistics of that yet because I didn't get to debrief, uh, with Mr. Oliveras from the time that happened today until I came. from the time that happened today until I came to the meeting. But I can get that answer for you and I can make sure to let you know how that's being communicated to the, to the residents of that apartment, of those apartment complexes and how we're actually doing that. Because safety is a, is certainly a big deal right now. And we are practicing very safe procedural type of actions in regard to making sure that we're not getting too close to people. Now, I will tell you, early last week when we first started this, we were, we wanted to take a bunch of selfies with everybody and how this world is right now, showing the servant heart that we do have. But we've tried to make sure we stay in appropriate space away from everybody during this, this challenge that we have. And I'll, but I'll let you know on the logistics on the, the large apartment complexes that we're serving.
And then, as far as the Chromebooks are concerned, that's, that's a, I call it a blessing, but that is wonderful. So, how are the parents knowledgeable that these are available? Who talks with them? Who calls them?
Yeah, so, a lot of the things that were, that were discussed right here, even though the board and the superintendent work at a, at a monthly business meeting pace, we've had to suppress the span of control and get that down to the campuses. Because I've got a pretty limited staff up here, but to serve all eighteen thousand students, withholding all of that, all the logistical functions of that, we just, we won't, we won't be successful. So, we've really deployed our campuses out to do that. So, the teachers and the principals and some front office staff are communicating with parents, trying to get a good hold, a good count on who all needs these, these devices. Again, we have five thousand. Don't know how much, how quickly we're going to be able to deconstruct those. I think it takes about an hour per cart is what I'm hearing. And soon as those are, and we've got a bunch of them at every one of our campuses. So, each campus will go through that and deploy those out. Again, using the campus administration to determine who gets those devices.
They're signed for.
Yeah, they'll sign off on them.
All right.
We'll know the barcode. I don't know if we're scanning the barcode or writing it down, but one, one way or the other, those things get checked out and then they're going to be responsible when they get checked back in. They also are given a, an actual contract whenever they, it's one pager. And not only on just, hey, you're getting one of our devices, you need to bring it back, but it's also on acceptable use as well. Even though everybody signs an acceptable use policy at the beginning of the year, we went ahead and redid it again as well.
Isn't that right, Captain?
Okay. As, as we redeploy these things because, now, you'll be interested in this. This is kind of, just kind of crept in my mind. We actually have firewalls on these devices as well, even away from the school district's site. Now, full disclaimer, some kids may get on sites that we, we can't even firewall. So, that happens anyways regardless if they're on our site or not. So, again, there's, here, there's that connection over perfection thing. We're trying to get the devices out. We're not going to be a hundred percent on that, but we are asking our students to make sure that they understand what the acceptable use policies are and not to get on these sites. And parents as well, if you jump on there to try to help the student, let's make sure we're very cautious about what sites we're jumping on as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Crawford, I have a question.
Talk.
More? There you go.
I have a question.
Okay.
On the distribution sites, are the students that are, that go to Dixie, Owens, Jack, they're kind of out, are they being able to get the materials, you know, from the, the sites that are, that they're available?
Yeah, so, once we get a good accounting of where the students are and what materials, I mean, a lot of students are telling us that already that, and that was part of a survey, do you have, do you have a device and do you have access? That was one of the questions that we had that went out last week. So, we've gotten a lot of feedback on that. So, those students are already, you know, engaged on the e-learning. Today were the packet pickups. And over time, again, that's that grace, that grace over pace, we will accumulate and figure out a way to get them the appropriate materials. Whether that be a Chromebook, they might have to come, they'll have to come up to the school and come through there and check that out if they, if they want a Chromebook. But if they need a learning packet or a consumable, our teachers are figuring out which ones of those need that. We'll either do deliveries, they can come pick them up. And in the worst-case scenario, like the Commissioner of Education said today, we will put them in the mail as well.
And what about the meals? Are they getting the meals?
Well, same thing. We're increasing sites as we determine where we can, you know, certainly expand. And I think that you'll see a ramp-up of the sites once we get to that point. We kind of had to test the waters on the logistics before we actually moved into the, to the meat of this thing. As we continue to evolve, we'll, we'll certainly be able to increase those sites as well. But, you know, if you think of like an Owens or Jack, they're not too far from Three Lakes. Dixie's really not that far from Bolter. I mean, I know it's not walking distance, but I don't think, unless we, I don't think any of our schools are truly walking distance from the way that we have such a large expansive school system with twenty, two-hundred-twenty-two miles. So, or two-hundred-twenty miles. So, we'll keep evolving as time goes on. I'm not going to promise that every elementary school is going to open up. I just don't know if we can feasibly handle that. But we'll try to continue to add where we need to. That's why we added it. We need to add them everywhere. I get, I get that. How do you determine need? But certainly, Austin, there's not a whole lot of sidewalks around that school there. That was somewhere that we needed to go ahead and open up and that's why we did that. Pete as well.
Okay, thank you.
This is uncharted territory for all of us. So, I would ask our parents to be very understanding and to work cooperatively with the school district because you all are doing an outstanding job in trying to supply materials as well as provide for the needs of our students. So, thank you for what you're doing.
The input, thank you. The inputs and the outputs are there. I don't, you know, outcomes, I don't know how you're going to measure this. But, but certainly, we, we are, there's a lot of energy and a lot of effort from a lot of folks. Very impressive on what they were able to build overnight. And, you know, if we ever have another emergency like this, we'll have a playbook. And even though there are no playbooks for crisis, everybody likes to have emergency operation procedures on a shelf somewhere and we'll pull that off. Well, okay.
Just to add my voice to the chorus of praise for you and your team and the teachers at TISD. It was a big shift to turn in the course of five days and you guys have successfully done it while continuing to meet the needs of students.
Thank you.
So, I was pleased to hear of the significant increase in feeding today and then a plan on how you can get to five thousand, which would represent the devious kids in our district.
Yeah, no doubt. Thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing to see how, within a week, you can mobilize, pivot, use your staff in creative ways to create a system that nobody's done before around here. And I know that's going on all over the state. But I also want to give a shout-out to all those principals and teachers that worked a little over the weekend to make sure this stuff was ready by Monday morning. And I would ask parents, you know, even like myself, where the, you know, clever through the schools, you know, link doesn't work and we have to get the clever extension online and then it works. You know, there's, there's going to be some frustrations. And I would ask parents to understand that we are delivering content for your kids to work on if they can work on it. Nobody is going to be failing because your Chromebook, you know, didn't work or anything like that. But there is a resource there that we can use to deliver content. And, and we will get there and we appreciate all of the hours that you guys have put into this over the last week and a half.
Hey, it's part of it. Thank you for bringing that up because I think the initial mission charge was, we realize people are hurting and people are going to hurt even more. And I know sometimes folks like to look at teachers or educators and say, well, yeah, at least y'all have a job. Well, you know, our day's going to come when, after the state legislature meets. You know, they set our budget. There, there could be a, a challenge for us down the road. But right now, we are fortunate and blessed to be where we are. And we, we owe it to our community. We owe it to Tyler. We love Tyler, love this school system. We love our kids. To work our tails off in a very, again, I'll call it an extraordinary time. This is, this is very different for a lot of people and our teachers have done well. Now, some of them are having to do some things at home while they're also juggling a couple of rugrats on their knees. But that's okay. I've seen some, some, some meetings online, some face Zoom calls or whatever to where they're holding their own kids, but they're still making connections back to their, to their own students. And that, that's heartwarming. And I think it'll calm down. If, if this does extend, I think folks will understand what routines need to be in place. That we all, we all need routines. I don't care if you're four years old or you're eighty-four years old. It's just good practice. It gives you something to strive for every day and it keeps you disciplined. And I think our, our parents will start figuring that out and our kids will certainly figure it out as well.
And I'm glad you brought up working at-home jobs. I want the parents of the district to understand that we understand that there might be two people working at home and it's hard to get all this stuff lined up. And we understand that there might be a little pressure you're feeling so your, your children can have access to these things. But I want to make sure that, you know, we understand and we definitely just want you to have the ability to do it and that if, you know, if you can't get around to it one evening, then, then that's okay. Please don't let us, unnecessary expectations burden you from the district. We just want you to have the access to these materials and take care of your family first like everybody's doing right now in this time. And, yeah, I just wanted to get that out there as well.
Very good. That's exactly right. You know, we, you can ask Dr. Hanson when she comes in here for three minutes or so. We could be here all night talking about this, by the way. And I don't mind that. But I'll say this, we, we, we did not design these lessons to be that long. Just short bursts of really core content as supported by the elective teachers when they possibly can. So, I think that kind of goes in line with, hey, don't, don't stress out about this. And I really, I think this lets us all appreciate what our teachers are doing on a daily basis and the curriculum that they do have to cover. But at the same time, parents, I agree with Mr. Washman. Man, y'all've got other stuff to worry about. And if you can figure out a way to get your kids over in a corner to do twenty-five minutes of mathematics or, or, or reading, learning, the instruction part will be taken care of when we get back together. Just, let's just keep them exposed.
Okay.
I'd like to give a shout-out to, to the teachers and, and let them know how, how I know that they, they did not just sit around and wait for the district to tell them what to do. I have a first-grade teacher in my family, my daughter's a first-grade teacher in another district, and she immediately started trying to find things that would be appropriate to keep her children engaged. And I know that that's every teacher in the district. And, and I want them to know how much we do appreciate that. And they've also been so willing to come together and be coordinated by what the district is asking them to do. And I'm just, I'm in awe of, of public school teachers.
Special group?
Absolutely.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions or comments about this superintendent's report?
Would y'all like staff to come in here and possibly just give you a little snapshot of things going on? Okay.
Sure, that'd be great.
Go ahead and have Gina, let's go ahead and have Dr. Hanson, or Dr. Hanson, if you can hear me and look at me. What you calling in here? Mr. Jones, right here. Okay, he's already here.
Where's this music?
I got it.
No, I'm sorry. Let's go ahead and, Dr. Hanson, or is there somebody at the door out there?
That's two, yeah, yeah. Hanson?
It's the most awkward thing.
Hi, Board. Yes.
She's got her back in a working ponytail tonight.
Yes, this is the pack, Pickup Packet, Operation Packet Pickup.
There you go. Dr. Hanson, anything you'd like to address the board with in regard to what we've been, and you get three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. So, really, we have two, two different systems happening. We have the online system, which you have spoken to. I know a lot of you are sort of struggling through getting into that. Once you get in, though, it's really wonderful. And then, the non-online system, which you've heard, y'all talked about, we, that we deployed today. We've made a lot more copies and we're sending those back out. I will say that the parents have been great. They really have been very gracious and, you know, very polite and, and even if we were out of packets and they either offered to come back or we're making other arrangements. So, just clarifying that all grade levels and all subjects are available at every stop. I think that's been a little bit of a miscommunication or people think you have to go to an elementary to get elementary packets and middle to get middle, but all, all packets are available at every stop. So, it's been great. And every, I, I can't say enough about the teamwork that's happened in this district. You guys would be so proud to see the fabulous teamwork that's happened from everyone. It's just been tremendous.
So, the parents know that the materials are there at bus stops, so they know to go to that bus stop?
They're, no, they're going to the place where the curbside food is.
Okay.
So, and we're adding, of course, Pete and Austin.
Eight sites where we're currently doing that.
We did go to eight bus stops, apartment complexes today and handed out somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and twenty packets today for those. That's not something necessarily, we're continuing all week. We're going to send some out, but their main focus past today for those apartments is to get them food Thursday and Friday.
You asked the question if the parents knew. I could show you a picture of Griffin of today's car line.
Long line.
Yes, same at Bolter.
That's one.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, the packets are only required if you don't have access to the internet or will everyone need the packet?
Right, no, we're, we're actually asking for people, if you have access and have a device, we're asking you to be online because that, and save the packets for the people who really don't have access. Some people thought they needed both and it's really, we're really asking you to save those packets for people who don't have access because it, you know, obviously, there's a limited number.
Now, consumables, once we get to that.
Right, everyone will have those.
Everybody will get a consumable.
So, that wonderful adoption that you, that you approved last year with Wonders and Marvelous and Envision's Math and those will all, everyone will have those once we can get those deployed, which will be nice. The kids will have their own materials that they had in their classroom. And that goes all the way through middle school reading. They'll have those.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. Who's next out there, Gina? Yes, absolutely. The architect of the online. I can't get Ms. Hiddle. Program, there you go. Ms. Hiddle, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. Fight, Raiders Fight, Fight Raiders, there's your fight song. There you go.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Thank you. All right, so, we have, I just got some numbers in to that, since we began our training process of our teachers on our online systems, we've had over thirty-five thousand successful logins between our administrative teachers and our students logging in today. So, so they're online. We have got them, that's quite a few people logging in and those don't count the unsuccessful logins that we've worked them, worked, helped work them through. So, we began the training process, once we had a clear plan of action of what we knew when the district, what we, our needs were in our district, we began developing those trainings last week. Then, we pushed those out to administrators first and then to teachers. And we had a series of online trainings, naturally, they were all online trainings for them. And then, all day Saturday, we hosted, over three hundred different calls came in from teachers to be able to just ask questions. I'm practicing what you've trained me on, help me through this. And so, we had, we hosted those all day Saturday. And a lot of their individual contents, we've been doing them yesterday all day. So, we were doing that, we did that again today. We had different sessions all through Zoom. So, we've been answering lots and lots of Zoom calls and conferences. We've all became very proficient at that and teachers are doing great with it. They are, we're really getting down to the same few questions now and just helping troubleshoot some of their, their things. and just helping, um, troubleshoot some of their, their things on their class, Google Classroom side or on their, and they're wanting to add some other things. They want to do a great job with this. They really want to put that into the hands of the students digitally and do a great job with that. So we're, we're still supporting them all week this week and beyond.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Rachel Barber, next, Director of Health Services. We originally exempted Rachel from coming tonight, but we thought it was pretty relevant, uh, considering the while we're here. Anything that you want to provide an update on, Ms. Barber?
So as he mentioned before, we did send out surveys to all of the staff and the students, um, to fill out about their travel. So we've been tracking that, quarantining the ones that needed to be quarantined based on where they traveled. Um, so currently this week, we have a hundred and seventy-four staff that are being quarantined and asked not to come to their campus because of international travel or travel to one of the hotspots. And several of those I've been in to contact with throughout the week, just letting them know, nope, you're not clear yet. Um, and we called all of the ones that traveled internationally on Sunday night just to reiterate the fact that they should not go to, go to campuses.
Yeah, one, one struggle we've had, and I've talked to a couple of you about it, are getting student responses on our emails. And we're still struggling with that right now. Probably need to reload and send that back out. We maybe had a couple of additional questions now that everybody's kind of calmed down now. And we're going to get our campuses, again, here's that suppression of the span of control, the campuses to help us on that. Instead of an email coming from Rachel Barber or Jennifer Hines, it needs to come from the campus. That data needs to come from them, people that they know probably understand a little bit better, so. But the longer we're in this span as well, the, the fourteen-day thing may not matter. Uh, but we, we certainly want to know if, if, if there are any, some extenuating circumstances there as we go forward.
And they're reporting to me if they're having symptoms and things too, so keep in check of all of that.
Okay.
In the same way that, uh, we have students who are dependent on the district to provide a couple of meals a day. There are also students who utilize the health services that the district provides. How, do you begin to think about how to provide those services in an environment where kids aren't coming to the school or, or assess what the need is?
So all of the school nurses have already started calling the students, um, end of last week and the beginning of this week, um, that they routinely see in the clinic or that require medications, um, or other procedures, just to make sure that they have all the supplies that they need and are getting the care that they need, especially our diabetics or other things. Um, our nurses at Bocheers have touched base with all of those parents as well, just to be sure that they have the care that they need. So far, everybody's doing well. Um, we have a few parents that the nurses are scheduling times during the office hours next week so that they can come and pick up medications and supplies that the schools have, so that they can pick those up.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. One at a time. One elementary and then we'll do the secondary. You can't come up here at the same time. Y'all would violate your personal, your, uh, social distancing right here in front of us, you know, on camera too. All right, Ms. Ward, anything you want to let the board know about elementary schools and operations?
Okay, um, teachers have definitely been making contacts with our students. They're calling the students to find out which students need packets versus the online learning. Um, they're providing Zoom conferences for if the student does have access to online learning so that they can actually see their students, talk through, we have phonics lessons that are happening online as well, um, throughout the district. So again, um, principals have, um, office hours at the campus this week. They're having modified office hours, of course, which is like the principal, NAP and our MTSs that are there to provide support for parents as they call.
Yeah, again, modified office hours.
Yes, modified.
Make sure we're clear about that.
Right, modified office hours. We're only about two or three people there.
There you go.
Okay.
Any questions for elementary operations?
Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Mr. Bitter, maintain a six-foot shield when y'all walk next to each other. Oh, you got really close to Gina.
I know.
Pretty elementary move, yeah.
Well-deserved honor there, so, uh, a little bit at the secondary level of some of the things that are going on. And a lot of moving parts to the secondary level, different class schedules and things like that that have to be dealt with. But, um, you know, really would just compliment the principals and the campus staffs on the way that they've worked through some of this stuff. Uh, I know a lot of people, you know, either you or people that you know, got phone calls, video messages, different things like that from a variety of teachers, uh, over the weekend, trying to facilitate that. And then, you know, manage how we try to get that service into the hands of every kid when they're dealing with different levels of access, resources and, and things like that. And so, uh, they've started to, uh, certainly, uh, build their capacity for providing some, uh, services in that area. And really just making sure that, uh, again, the first week and, and probably first two weeks, really, the focus is on how do we make sure that we've had personal contact with every kid in the system, especially our younger kids? And make sure that they know that, uh, we're here for them and working on services for them and, and resources to help them be successful. Uh, just making sure that we can account for them and know what they have at their fingertips, uh, so that we can serve them the best. And then we'll start working through some of those more secondary issues in the coming weeks as it relates to, you know, athletics, fine arts, different things like that, um, supplies, resources, so to speak. So they will be on campus and be responsive to issues and communicating and, um, you know, making sure that they're staying in touch with their specific school communities. And then a lot of our middle school campuses, obviously, are, are pickup sites for packets and, uh, and food service, so they will continue that as well.
Yeah, we've got some things to talk about. We were talking about earlier today in regard to GPA and, um, class ranking and things like that. And as the time goes on, we'll figure out how we need to, to best go about doing that. A lot of school systems have cut off, that, that went ahead and just cut off their last grading period, uh, for ranking, is that correct?
Yeah, a lot of them are either, are, are forcing that back to where they finished their third nine-week period, if they're on a nine-week system, or, or cut it back off at the end of the fourth six weeks, um, as that's, you know, the most lo, reliable final grading point that we have for the stuff in our system. And then we also have to take into account some, uh, dual credit grading, different things like that, you know, in working with TJC as well, so. Should have a lot more clarity and, and direction on that here in the, in the coming days.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you.
The old Houston Cougar right there. We now have, we have Danny Brown left, our police, uh, police department chief. And after him will be Jeff Millslegel in your last presentation on the last topic of Jennifer Hines and Communications.
Good evening, Board.
Evening.
Uh, thanks for letting me speak. We, uh, I just want to let you know that, uh, the TISD police officers are on duty. They were on duty last week, most of them. But this week I bring them all in because we've got things to do. We've got, uh, our staff is out and about, so I want a police officer out there. They're going to the apartment complexes. And they're going to the food locations, just hanging out, making sure that everything's okay there, just to be in a presence. And our other thing that I've got them doing is, you know, we've secured all of the playgrounds and the campuses. So with, they're all locked and we've had some people that want to get on those facilities. So we're going and just making sure that they're, they're not anyone on those and explaining to them the reason why we've locked up our facilities. But we're out, we're working and, uh, trying to keep everybody safe. Thank you.
Great.
And we really hate having to do that.
Yeah, me too.
So even if, uh, well, I guess you have to keep them locked, if you had a family of three who wanted to go play, that would be okay. But once you see three, more will come.
Yeah. Yes.
I really hate that.
Come on, come on down.
Agent Millslegel?
Where's the Millslegel music?
Good evening, Board, good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Crawford, uh, as Chief Brown just said, we've locked down the campuses, we're keeping a close eye on that. I've taken the opportunity this week to take a look at all of our cameras, do an assessment of that, and I'm finishing up all the school audits. So those will be coming to the board shortly. And one other nice thing on a good note, we did get the, almost three hundred thousand dollars from the state of Texas for school safety, uh, improvements. So we're working on that and I'm working with facilities and maintenance on any issues that might have come up, any little vandalism, things like that in the district. So things are rolling in an unprecedented time in my lifetime.
You've seen it all.
Nothing like this.
You say we've had vandalism?
A couple of fences have been crushed. People wanted to get onto the campus for whatever reason. We've gotten a few calls, um, some unlocked gates, um, throughout the district. They've put locks and, and chains on it, but we attended to that. We're taking a look at, at one of the gates that they jumped on. Idle times for kids and adults.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Ms. Hines?
Good evening, Board. Dr. Crawford, how are y'all today?
You doing?
We have been sending out communications since before spring break, uh, since we got back from spring break. Of course, as you all know, our work started way before that. We've been sending out text messages, emails, robo-calls, as they say, every form of communication that we can possibly send to let people know when and where the sites are, when they're open for both food and then now packets. Um, and as we continue to change in this fluid and flexible time, you will continue to see new information roll out daily. What I'm trying to do right now is to not overload people with information. So for example, even though we may know something might be coming up next week, in order to can, not confuse them, we will tell them what's happening this week and then as we get closer to the next week, say packets might be delivered a little bit differently, we'll hand out that information at that time so that they don't think it's happening right now, but instead later. Is there any questions that you might have for us? I've tried to copy you on several of the pieces of material that we've been sending out over the last few days as things change and come about.
No questions, just.
I appreciate the copy.
Yeah, statement that you guys have one of the most important jobs in the district because if people don't know what we're doing, you know, then what's it for? What's its purpose? So, um, you and Dr. Crawford have done a good job of getting the word out and also putting out statements and letting the public just know where we stand on things. And, um, sometimes we're tempted to, as, as people on the board, to go out on our own and, you know, should I make a statement? Should I do this? But I, I love that you guys have us covered and we have a, a public relations department and we have a superintendent who can handle the job and you're doing fine, so.
Well, I would like for y'all, if you have not had a chance yet, we do have a TylerISD.org slash COVID nineteen page. And if you do get a po, approach to public or you may not know the answer to something, we have all of that information there from where to pick up packets, what the food schedule is. We also have an updated daily FAQ section for those frequently asked questions. We have those in multiple locations. We even have them sectioned out by topic. So there's lots and lots of information out there, so definitely feel free to push people there where they can get some of that information if they're looking for it.
Do you have the same thing on Channel Nineteen?
Yes, the majority of everything that we are posting is also going on Channel Nineteen. The other thing that we're doing is we're posting all of our press releases, both in English and in Spanish, on our website as well. And the notices so that parents can access those in both languages. And when we do send out communications to the parents, we are sending them out in both English and in Spanish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay, so last presenter. Um, you do have a couple of action items for consideration. We need a five-minute little reading period for that. Oh, and then here comes Ron Jones. They're gonna, they're gonna take a little time to read these, uh, resolutions prior to you staying here. It's legal. Okay. Do you have these, do we have these at their spots, Gina? The actual resolution?
Here's one if anybody wants to read it. I read it. I've got like two questions, but it looks fine.
We'll take a little five-minute reading opportunity.
I think Trish still has her menu up.
Seem to say citizens would be willing to sacrifice their lives, but we say, yes, come, for their kids.
Do you mean to sacrifice their lives?
Yeah. That's the quote.
Me and Mrs. Jones.
Yes, sir. I got that. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Never heard that one, I'm sure.
President Washman, I appreciate that walk-on music there.
Sir.
Yeah. Trustee, Dr. Crawford. Now, what you guys have just had an opportunity to preview or to review is a set of resolutions, a resolution for the way that we are going to pay employees during this mitigation period. And it also discusses the emergency shutdown period that we had last week. And so, I'll just speak briefly in reference to the resolution, because last week, the emergency shutdown period, those employees that came in, those non-exempt employees that came in, will be paid a premium for the time that they came in to work. So, that, that was for last week. Now, moving forward, starting today, since we are back in school, it's just school, albeit very different, but we are back at work. And so, employees will continue to be paid for their time, both exempt and non-exempt, the non-exempt being our hourly employees, for their time, but there will not be that premium on top of their regular pay moving forward. In addition, the resolution also addresses how we will handle those who are temporary employees, such as our permanent subs, who have gone through the exact same training as our teachers did this past weekend, that, that's now in the process of providing instruction to kids, and those packages out to students, contacting students. Those individuals will be paid for their time as well moving forward. So, we've got different types of situations that these resolutions gives us an opportunity to address moving forward, to pay employees during this, however long this, this, this process has to continue. So, I will entertain any questions, and I've got my wingman over here, Attorney Hardy, who will assist. Should I get caught up? Any questions?
Okay, after reviewing this document, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Jones?
I just have a statement. I am just peacock proud that our employees continue to receive pay, and I hope they are as well. And I'm sure what we're asking them to do, that they understand that is a part of their contractual responsibilities. Whereas some people may not know where their next paycheck will come from, Tyler ISD employees do.
We are very blessed indeed.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Doesn't look like we have any questions. I will go ahead then and entertain a motion on this item, to approve this, this resolution before us related to school closures and employee compensation.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution concerning school closures and payment to employees.
Do I have a second?
Seven.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
You have something you need to add? Okay, we're still on schedule for contracts and things like that?
Yes, we are very much so still on schedule with our contract process, the process for extension of contracts, non-renewals, those that will not be invited back. We are, we were at a point in the school year where we have enough data with teacher observations that we have enough to carry through, to close out that process. So, that process will not be hindered as we are going through the remainder of this school year that work continues.
Kudos to principals and HR for having their ducks in a row before spring break, before this goofiness started.
And there will be tons and tons of virtual interviews taking place, because of course, all of the job fairs have been canceled to this point. And so, we will be Skyping, we will be interviewing however we can during this uncharted water.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you. I got this. All right. Okay. Future business.
Future business, we have a board workshop that will try to reschedule, or reschedule the reschedule. We originally said we weren't going to do our April ninth board workshop. That's back on now, at least temporarily, just for the mere fact of the teacher incentive allotment that fits in our timeline. We also have a board meeting that's coming up, and that's going to be on April the twentieth. Is that correct? Is that on, I have my... Is that what it says? Twentieth, yes. Okay, so April ninth, April twentieth. Board, I appreciate y'all coming tonight. I appreciate the public tuning in on TV or live stream. Let me encourage everyone. Our goal is to get our seniors graduating, to have a ceremony for them. And I just want to make sure that we reiterate that. Every kid that earns a diploma from Tyler ISD or anywhere deserves that, y'all heard me say it in my graduation speech, deserves that demarcation between this portion of their lives and the next portion. So, we certainly want to do everything we can to do that. We're also going to get out of this mess. We will return to normal, hopefully sooner rather than later. And whenever we, we need these meetings, the teacher incentive allotment, those are important things that are going to make our school system get better, once we get out of this. We had a lot of momentum, a lot of success. We really turned the ship. And once we can get out of this little phase that we're in, that everybody's experiencing, we need to get back to business. And that would be something that would be getting back to business, is consideration and the work on the teacher incentive allotment, and participating in that, along with other things that we're doing. We've still got construction that's going on. Again, want to make sure the public reiterates, or we reiterate that that is continuing to go on, and we're hoping to be able to get into our school facilities this coming August, as we keep opening sections of John Tyler and getting into new portions of Lee as well.
Okay, thank you. I did want to say before, entertain a motion for adjournment, that some of you watching on TV might see a white and purple and gold jersey sitting over there, draped on that chair, and that is to honor Freeman Sterling, who represented District Three. That's why the number three is on there, and his fraternity's colors were purple and gold. And he was a good trustee, and he was an even better man. And he represented District Three with poise, and he worked well with the Board. And somebody came and spoke in public participation earlier about what we're going to do to fill, fill that spot. And before we did that, I felt it was necessary just to honor Freeman in a way, by doing something like we've done here, and honor his work on the Board for a period of time before he rushed into the process of trying to replace him. And as, moving forward, it's been about a month since his passing, and I think we're going to start the process of how to fill that seat. And the district will be coming out with information on that moving forward. But I just wanted to publicly, even though nobody's here, and hopefully people are watching, honor the work that Freeman Sterling did on this Board. And he will always be remembered by us, and especially this group, this great group. And he'll be remembered in the hearts of Tyler ISD. So, that being said, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.